Good evening and welcome to the September 9th, 2014 School Committee Meeting. We're going to begin this meeting by recognizing and thanking the following, actually thanking Tim Riley, volunteer for taping tonight's production. It's being recorded by East Hampton Public Access Cable. And East Hampton Public Access Cable Station Channels 5, 19, and 20 is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. Superintendent Fallinsby, do you have some announcements for us?
I do. The next school committee meetings are September 23rd, October 14th, 28th, November 18th, and December 9th, 2014. There's no school on Tuesday, November 4th, due to Election Day and Teacher Professional Development Day. There is no school on Tuesday, November 11th, due to Veterans Day. There is no school Wednesday through Friday, November 24th through 26th, due to Thanksgiving Break. There's no school Wednesday through Friday, December 24th through January 2nd, due to Christmas, New Years, and Winter Break. School will reopen on Monday, January 5th, 2015. East Hampton, another exciting announcement here. East Hampton High School, SAD, Students Against Destructive Decisions, is organizing a Country Concert for a Cause on Saturday, October 4th, 2014. Tickets are $7 and proceeds go to raising awareness around destructive driving. Anyone interested in purchasing tickets can go to easthamptonconcert.brownpapertickets.com and we hope that we'll get a great turnout that day.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we do not have any correspondence tonight, so we will move on to gifts.
You do not believe there are any gifts that...
Is that... This thing that you just did through, I think is the correspondence.
Correspondence, yes.
Oh, this is the correspondence?
I think so. I'm not... Sue, did this...
This just came from the middle school.
We don't know who it came from. Well, luckily for us, Dr. Perone is here tonight to talk about this correspondence.
Okay. (laughing).
I don't know that it was intentionally a piece of correspondence so much as the intent of the Guidance Department to share the school profile, which was completed over the summer with the school committee. So there was no... Your school committee checked this out. It was really, we just wanted to keep everyone informed of the documents that are generated and this captures a lot of data that we thought you would be interested in seeing, so we wanted to make sure we shared it with you. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions about the document, the school profile. It is on the website. We do try to provide information that we think people would find interesting in the community and that you would find interesting from the school committee.
I think it's great. It summarizes everything so beautifully, it's easy to read, and it's so impressive. Really impressive.
Excellent.
Thank you, Dr. Perone.
(inaudible).
Okay. So, Dr. Perone's correspondence and we do not have any gifts this evening. Okay. At this time, we invite anyone who might like to come speak to us about any topic on the agenda, not on the agenda, to do so, but it doesn't look as though we have anyone here who would like to do that. So we'll move on and ask if we have a report from the Finance Subcommittee. We have not.
Nothing new to report, no?
Okay. How about the Policy Subcommittee?
Nope. The only thing to report, and maybe I can quickly ask Peter. Peter, would you be available for a Policy Subcommittee meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so we will be meeting at 6:00 PM before our next school committee on September 23rd. There's a policy that we have to create.
Okay, very good. CES. Wendy, do you have an update for us?
I don't have an update and I'm worried that... I haven't seen any meetings for this school year. I need to get in touch with Ann Farrington at the Collaborative and get an update.
Okay.
I don't know if I've missed one or things have gone past me, but I haven't caught anything about a date. I've seen officers, election of officers, but I haven't seen anything else.
Okay. And that brings us to Brian Atwater for Student Activities Update.
Well, everything's going great. It's the second week of school. Everybody has adjusted back to EHS and the rest of the school's schedule. Schedule changes have been happening and students have readily accepted and are abiding the new changes to the Handbook and Dress Code. We've had many fall sporting events that have been successful, a lot of wins for the Eagles, and other than that, everybody seems to be pretty happy to be back in school.
I just have to share one story on that topic. I have a student who's a freshman this year at the high school and I was just so touched and impressed. She came home from school, the first day of school, with this little treat bag, like goody bag, and in it were a whole bunch of things, and I'm trying to remember frantically what they were, but with little notes attached and something that said like, something you need when you take tests, and it had a little package of Smarties attached to it, and when you need help to hold things together, and there was a string of paper clips, tools you need for class, and there were pencils wrapped up, and when you need help, there was a lifesaver stuck to the paper. I mean, it went on and on. Oh, for when you make mistakes, and there were some erasers, and it was just cutest thing, and some, a student, and I'm told the person who did this was, I hope I'm going to pronounce her name correctly, Karina Volpe, did all this, wrote these all out by hand, glued and stuck. There was a little candle, there was a whole assortment of things in this bag with these cute, really nice thoughtful messages to make the freshmen feel welcome, and I just thought it was really above and beyond and very special, and I think it really speaks to the culture at our high school and how caring, what a caring community it is, and what a great, great atmosphere we have there, and great student body. So I just wanted to say thank you to Karina, and I think that was under the auspices of the SAD organization, I'm told, the Students Against Destructive Decisions, and just want to say kudos to everybody and that great effort.
Thanks for sharing that.
Additionally, last note, PTO, the new PTO, met this past week, and it was a really successful meeting. I think they had close to 40 people in attendance and things went really smoothly. They even tackled, you know, the revision and voting into the new bylaws. So it looks like things are streamlined, that they're going to be presenting that at the next meeting to put it through and have a brand-new set of guidelines and things look up to. So they've also set their fundraising schedule for the year, they've set their meeting schedule for the year, they do have a Facebook page and a website that you can visit for all the information relevant to that. So far, so good. That's great. Okay, let's see, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, so I asked my building administrators to come here this evening and share their school improvement goals with you. They printed off their goals, all of their goals, which also included a student learning goal and a professional practice goal. The new State of Educator Evaluation System requires that all administrators have a student learning goal, a professional practice goal, and three to five school improvement goals. The intention of these goals are that they're aligned with my goals, which were approved at the last meeting, and I've worked with the administrators on drafting their goals, and I'm going to ask them each to come up and just talk a little bit with you about primarily their school improvement goals, because those are the goals that, you know, mirror the district improvement goals. So I'm going to start with Dr. Perone.
One thing I wanted to say before I really got into the school improvement goals at the high school was that we, as a leadership team, really made a deliberate attempt to create cohesion amongst the goals. So it started with our strategic plan this summer, where we were revisiting and revising that strategic plan as a leadership team, and then we used the goals created by the superintendent to inform the goals that we made for ourselves as student learning and then school improvement and professional practice, of course. But really what we wanted to do, because there are so many things that are being thrust upon us, so many mandates that are coming at us, is find a way to tie things together and really be cohesive in the creation of the goals that we, that we're going to focus our attention on during the school year. And that was, I keep saying deliberate, but we really thought, what can we do to keep things tight and to make sure that the focus that we have is kind of laser-like, and I know the superintendent has used that before, but that is certainly what we, what our intent was. For the high school, the focus of the school improvement goals kind of threefold: data, instructional core, and college and career readiness. And I'm very excited about the work that we're doing at the high school and the data team that is created two years ago at the high school has done some fantastic work around learning walks and identifying a focus for the high school, and that focus has been complex tasks. And we looked at multiple data sets to try and determine what is it that we most need as a body, a faculty, to focus on to help all our students achieve at high levels. And I say multiple data points, because this isn't just about MCAS, this is about all the assessments that really we, as, that we challenge our students with, and about the classroom assessments, and about benchmark assessments, and about common assessments. It's not just about one state high-stakes test. And we really want our students, no matter where they fall on the spectrum, to be able to push themselves up, whether you're a needs improvement kid that's moving up to proficient, or you're a four on an advanced placement test and you want to get a five, or you're a bubble student that's low advanced and you want to go high advanced. We're looking at all our students and how to move them up, those hierarchies wherever they fall. So what we've tried, what we're trying to do as a faculty is focus on data, look at where the bubbles are, if you will, and then use the instructional core, which is content, teachers, and students, and try and drive all student achievement up. The college and career piece is, for the five years that I've been here, has been one of the goals that I've had, and that's usually driven by our building support team, Guidance Department, identifying students who maybe need more support or interventions to move from a lower level to a higher level, or how do we prepare all students for the next level, whether it's college or career, whether we're looking at Dartmouth or we're looking at HCC, whether we're looking at a career vocational certification, or we're looking at a degree. So those are the basis of all our goals, our data instructional core, excuse me, instructional core and college and career readiness. As a faculty, what we're trying to do is really spread the profession and identify best practice. So the data team and the professional development for the last two years has focused on practice in the classroom and how that's interacting with students and their attention on activities and assignments that we're recognizing as complex tasks. And the goal is to get teachers out of their own classroom and into your classroom and see what you're doing that's best practice, and then take that best practice and spread it throughout a department and spread it throughout a school. And that's the goal for the last two years that we've had at the high school. We've had support from DESI to institute learning walks, which is a combination of our data team and professional development team with teachers that go into other classrooms and look for best practice in the classroom and spread that best practice throughout the building. So that's been our goal for the last two years. We have a fantastic data team made up of science, math, administration, and we also have a PD team with social studies teachers involved. We're really trying to make sure that we allow all students an opportunity to succeed by focusing on complex tasks and the instructional core, what teachers are doing in the classroom and what they're asking students to do. Now, I know you all have the goals in front of you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. I just wanted to give a synopsis of what we're looking at.
Well, one thing I want to comment on is, Dr. Perone, I think you've been in the district for six years now?
Yeah, I'm starting my sixth year now.
And the four years that I've been a superintendent, we've talked a number of times about rigor at the high school, and that was one of our first conversations when I took over as superintendent. And, yeah, I want to acknowledge the work that you've done on building that rigorous curriculum and instruction at the high school. Our test results show a definite increase, our graduation rates and our dropout rates, so there really is solid evidence of that work that you've done to bring a rigorous curriculum and instructional classroom work to our high school, so.
Thank you very much. It's a culture that's very positive at the high school, and we have some superstars that are there, and really what I've been able to do is kind of get everybody together with a common purpose and find a way to, again, identify that best practice. I don't know how else to say it, other than that we are professionals, and just like a doctor or a lawyer, when you identify a best practice, whether it's in surgery or in the boardroom, you spread that best practice throughout, and that's what we're trying to do at the high school. And I think people are excited about that. And as I said, we have great teachers at the high school, come in and see what's going on in our classes, and that's really the culture that we're trying to create, and that's what we want. We want the best for our students, for your children, and that's what it's about.
Thank you very much.
Because you have it highlighted here, could you talk to us about this "Just Us Making Progress" program?
I can. I did highlight that. The grant cycle and when grants are approved happens after we do our goals. For the last five years, we've had the 21st Century Grant at the high school, and we really did some exemplary things with that program. Jerry Rousher, who has worked at both schools, the middle and the high school, as a coordinator on that, and we've, of course, collaborated with the Collaborative, with our grants. Unfortunately, that grant was not renewed, so I think what happened was the state recognized, hey, you've made some great progress, but there's some other districts that could use this money to make progress in general. And so I think sadly, the money was taken from us, given to someone that maybe needed it more. So I put it, I highlighted it because I didn't quite know how I was going to work, move forward with the loss of that 21st Century Grant. But again, with some creative problem solving with our new curriculum grants director, Polly Parker, and with Jerry Rousher, I think we're going to be able to, be able to move forward with it, but we're going to have to be flexible in how we use resources to do so. And we might have to collaborate with the middle school, which, not a bad, a bad thought. The idea that we've bounced around is that maybe our students would be mentors for the middle school students. We would house their program, which is still funded, at the high school. And so, you know, working with Ms. Belize, we've really tried to work around the loss of the grant and maybe hop on board with the grant that they still have, but do it the right way so that all students are benefiting and that our students are mentors for the middle school students.
Thank you.
And I think that's another indication of how my administrators, our administrators here in this district, and our leadership team are working together to really bring the very best possible education and experiences to our students. Peter, you have a question?
In the same school improvement goal, number three, your action, number four, strikes me as a benchmark, where you talk about the graduation rate, but it may, I mean, it may just be a matter of semantics, and I think that's a great goal, and I hope, you know, how you achieve the increased graduation rate is the crucial piece there, and it seems to me that's the action piece.
Right.
But I was wondering, in terms of number two, and then also under key actions and then number two under benchmarks, have you had any consideration of looking at similar numbers about what we would expect to see in terms of the number of folks who are immediately pursuing careers as opposed to college and what those acceptance rates are as a targeted number, the way you have with graduation rates?
I know that in the school profile, we do have that data in there.
Right.
So what are you asking? You say...
I guess my question is, it sounds like a number four as a key action, you're taking what I think is a good action, which is to increase the graduation rate above the DESI mandated amount.
Right.
And I'm wondering if there's any benefit to setting, or if it's possible to set a similar kind of target around colleges that our students are applying to and career placement opportunities that our students are pursuing, and then also, you know, where do they get admitted and what jobs do they secure?
Sure.
With, it appears that data's the name of the game now, and what's neat about the document that we were looking, I'm trying to scroll back to the profile, is that we have this list that's the classes of 2012 to 2014.
Right.
Right? This is all the places where students have been accepted, and it's an enormous list, and it shows the full range of opportunities that our students secure to pursue their college, but it, but it's just a broad list. It doesn't talk about sort of the progress, 12, 13, 14, which I think there probably has been, and I'm wondering if there's a way to have data that could come out that would document that so that we can say to families, yes, here's a list of all the places that students have been accepted over the last three years, and I gather this will be rolling data in the profile, right, next year, 2013 through 2015. But showing within that three-year span the kinds of progress, the changes, the increased number of students who are applying to a wider range of schools. And then that's just on the college side, and I'm thinking it's going to be really difficult, but I think it would be valuable as well to have some sort of profile about the kinds of employment. You know, we've seen great anecdotal stories here. People have come in that have worked in businesses in the community, have gone on to become successful full-time employees of local businesses, but that, I'm wondering how...
Like a questionnaire, Peter?
We can gather the data and then promote the data, in the same way that we're doing it with something as basic as graduation rates.
Right. I would say the graduation rates and the dropout rates and all that is captured for us.
Right.
We would have to find a way to capture that data beyond anecdotal, because a lot of the stuff that I've heard in my five years has been voluntarily given to us. So I would say you've struck on what we would need to do, is find a way to get a survey out to our graduates to find out where they are, one year, three years, five years down the line. And I guess my feeling is, I'm going to focus on those things I have more control over.
Sure.
But I like the idea because I think it's another way to balance this data that isn't, beyond the state mandated tests and those things. So I would certainly sit down with my Guidance Department and talk about that idea. I think it's a fantastic idea to capture some of that qualitative data that we could get from students beyond just anecdotal.
There's a cultural shift of focus, too. You know, 10, 15 years ago, it was all about where you were accepted or perhaps where you attended, and nobody would pay attention if you graduated or not, or if you did, how successful you were. I think now there's more of a reasoned, rational assessment of, did you, you know, incur an enormous amount of debt? Were you able to succeed at college? Were you able to secure any sort of position or, you know? So I think that that kind of information would be really helpful, because my suspicion is that coming from this community, I would suspect that kids are more successful and self-sufficient five years postgraduate than a lot of neighboring communities.
And I have to give kudos to the Guidance Councilors that we have at East Hampton High School. They've done some amazing things in the years since they've been hired, and they were hired in my second year. Just last year, we had the College Fair. You know, there was a huge event at the new school, and it's almost like you build it and they will come. I think that's part of the excitement around the high school right now, is we have a brand-new facility, and it's bringing those things in. And the work that Ms. Savro and Mr. McGuire have done around college and career readiness is pretty amazing, and I think some people on this committee could talk to that, too. But Peter, just to get back to your point, I think it's a great idea and it's something I could certainly pursue with the Guidance Department.
I know that we were, and this is something that's available, The New York Times today published, and College Affordability Index, and again, I think that there's information that's available there that, and I bet the Guidance Department already knew about this and probably participated in some of the data that went into something like that, but having people in East Hampton understand, and again, this is a good list, and I'm impressed to see schools in California as well as in New England that our students are applying to, but it really, it does suggest that if economic concerns are limiting the scope of interest that our students are expressing, that there's some real great opportunities out there that are more affordable than they might, than they might think. And again, that's just focusing on the college side. I know the career side is even harder. The college side, we're sort of automatically linked up to because they want transcripts from us and, you know, we sort of know when students matriculate. But I think that that, as appealing as the documented evidence about graduation rates is, families want to know, okay, and where does that graduation launch them to? What kinds of jobs are they securing? What kinds of college opportunities are they getting to? Can I ask one other, and I think it's just a matter of understanding, in the professional practice goal, when it's three-five, that means three-two-five, right?
Oh, three-to-five, yes.
It's three-to-five, right?
Yes.
Okay. I was trying to, right. So, and that's with, is there, is that a random selection of teachers, or is that prescribed based on where the teachers are in their professional...
At the high school, what we do is, any student, any teacher that has non-professional status, I supervise and evaluate. Teachers with professional status, Mr. Burke and myself, my assistant principal, we split the evaluations, so that any teacher that's non-tenured, if you will, is being supervised by me, so, and I'm taking them through their first three years until they have professional status. The teachers that have professional status are on a two-year evaluative cycle, and our goal is to get into three to five classes a week for purposes of evaluation. That doesn't take into account the professional development and data team work that we're doing to get into classrooms and observe as professionals.
Right, and they're also observed by colleagues within their department as well, right? And so I think that's, again, this is a document that shows up as part of the public record, and I think it's important for folks to know that there are multiple layers of ways that the teachers are supported, evaluated, held accountable, and that it's both department by department, as well as you and Mr. Burke, and through this system, so.
And one point I do want to make, because this is a huge consideration for a teacher, is that when I visit a classroom as part of a learning walk, it's nonevaluative. This is, we are collecting data and trying to identify best practice for the intent of spreading it. If I go into your classroom, Peter, as an evaluator, it's a different type of observation. I have different criteria that I'm looking for, I'm being driven by the rubric that the state and that we have adopted.
And we hope eventually those two things are going to work in concert closely.
And I just want to make one comment. I think, Peter, your idea is excellent, and we've actually talked about this, or I've talked about this with other school committee members in terms of tracking, you know, where our students are accepted at college and where they attend college, and, you know, what happens after college or after high school in terms of career. I just want to caution us all that, you know, to give Dr. Perone the latitude to work with his guidance people to determine what step they feel they can take this year, because they have a very full load of responsibilities at the high school, and we just don't want to, we want to make sure that we're not overloading anyone.
It may not be on you, Dr. Perone. I think that might be something that perhaps a parent organization, something like the PTO or Booster Phil, some other group may be able to take that.
Well, let's start with the guidance staff. I think that it's excellent to start with them and help have them work with Dr. Perone to think about what step they could take in that direction this year and maybe plans for the future years, things that won't overwhelm them.
And if I might, the school council, which is a body of parents, students, and teachers, I think that's not a bad place to start talking about these things, too, because you get some valuable input, and I think Brian sits on that. It might not be a bad idea to get some input from students, especially the juniors and seniors, to then think about, well, what's a way you might respond to a survey? How could we reach out to you after you are at UMass or HCC or wherever you end up? So I think it's a great idea, and you're right, believe me, I know how busy we are, but I think that's a pretty reasonable thing to at least begin discussion about and get ideas on how we might move it forward.
Any other questions for Dr. Perone?
Can I ask a question in anticipation of the field trip that we're going to be previewed later?
Certainly.
Right, because it's a high school field trip to Italy.
Yes.
Is there going to be an opportunity to renew or continue the relationship that was established a few years back, or is this completely separate? Remember, you had a colleague.
Yeah, unfortunately, he died. I'm sorry.
Sorry to find that out that way.
Yeah, it was terrible.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, no, you wouldn't have known.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Perone.
Thank you, Dr. Perone.
Okay, Ms. Belize from White Brick Middle School. Okay, Ms. Belice from White Brook Middle School.
So the school, as Dr. Perone kind of took us through the process of how we form our school improvement goals. It's the same for all of us. We work in collaboration with each other. So the middle school's school improvement goals are very similar to the high schools. Except instead of the college and career readiness goal, the third goal, we are implementing something called the Virtues Project at White Brook this year. We've already been, we've started two of the days in August. We were trained by Dara Feldman from the Virtues Project. And it's really, it's initiative to look at relationships. You know, we talk about rigor, relevance, and relationships, and this is the relationship piece. It's, it's just helping staff relate to kids, kids relate to staff. We're involving parents and we're really involving the whole White Brook community. The custodians, the bus drivers, the lunch monitors, everyone. So we're all speaking the same virtues language. And so far, it's been very well received. We had a parent night the last Thursday in August before school opened and we had about 55 people come. We put the letter out to everyone and it's, it's off to a great start. We're, we're also looking at the instructional core and data. We are a little bit behind the high school. Our data team is new. We are just in the beginning phases of starting to look at how we're going to collect data, analyze data, and use it to inform instruction. I don't know if anyone has any questions on our goals.
I was going to ask about the Virtues product, project, but that's really encouraging.
Actually, I brought a couple of handouts about the Virtues project. We're also going to, it's attached to the second goal, first goal. We're also going to start learning walks. We're going to, I worked with Kelly Brown this summer. She's part of the learning walks team at the high school and she volunteered to kind of mentor me on that process. So I'll be going to their data team and learning walk meeting tomorrow. And we are probably going to start within two weeks of looking at that whole process with our data team and with some additional teachers. So we're excited about that also. Questions?
I just have one quick question. How do you establish your teams? Is it volunteers, is it, you know, groups?
Well, for, like for the data team.
Yeah, or, or any other team, you know, high school.
I don't know if it was the same process at the high school, but because it's a stipended position, we put it out to everyone. But we're a little bit strategic on who we, who we put on the team. We try to, the same as the high school, we have like a math teacher, an ELA teacher, a science teacher. And we, on our data team, we also have one of our administrative assistants from our office, Sarah McGee, who is like a computer wizard data expert. So she's really going to be instrumental this year. Cause one of the problems with data for the teachers at the middle school has been just the whole process of putting it into a spreadsheet, collecting it, and knowing how to look at it and share it. Because we, we still have a lot of veteran teachers who have notebooks with little dots all over it. And it's not useful to share with people. So Sarah is going to create data sheets and help teachers be able to do that this year.
So what I'm hearing from this is your teams are very diverse.
Very diverse. Yeah. Anybody else have other questions for Ms. Belice?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Virtues project is very exciting and, oh, great. And this is something new that Ms. Belice has, is this one? One packet, I, I can have copies made or emails.
Ooh, email.
I'll send it to you in email. How's that?
Yeah, I'll have to email it.
Okay. Or we can make PDFs of this. But at any rate, very proud of, of what they're doing at, at White Brook. And Ms. Napolitano now from Center Peppin.
Hi, everybody. So my three school improvement goals, again, same process that we went through with the other administrators in creating these. My three school improvement goals are surround the instructional core, school culture, and then community engagement. With the instructional core goal, again, like Dr. Perone talked about, with the, trying to make some cohesive, cohesive plans. We want our professional development plan to really support our new ELA and math scopes and sequences. We want those faculty meetings to not just be, you know, lists of things to do, but more of a professional development model that support the new things that we're implementing. Our observations that we see, we want to see the things that we talk about in professional development going on in our classrooms when we go into observations and make sure that all of this is tied together. So that it's not just a PD day, one day that you don't ever see again in the classroom or see again at all. So we really want those things to really tie in really solidly together. We talked a lot about that today in our half-day professional development day and how already we can make ties to what we talked about in the first three days of, of our August PD and then what we have planned for the coming professional development time. So really wanting to make sure that, that what we're doing is, is seen all across everything that we do. The two other goals kind of go hand-in-hand with school culture and community engagement. We really want parents, teachers, students to feel like they're really a part of the Center Peppin community. We want to make sure that we're addressing needs, questions, concerns. We want to know why people stay. We want to know why people leave. We want to get all this information together so that we can really, you know, create that environment that really supports students, supports teachers, supports parents, and really makes us a welcoming community. So those are what those goals are really based upon. Any questions?
Can that be part of the, sort of, all the way, cave through 12, the tracking and the, and the data in terms of when folks are making decisions about charter and choice? And, and where those points are precisely as, as part of each of these? Because I, I just think it's valuable information for us to be interpreted first and foremost by the school administrators in each case to say, this is what we think this means. But, you know, I know that there are points where families are choosing to move. And that's true in, in the independent school world too. And we're all trying to figure out what are driving those points and how much, how much of it is within our control? And how much of it's, you know, preordained and there's nothing you can do except, you know, move on as, as it happens. But that way, you're focusing on only the ones that, that are really within our control, where we can make a difference.
And we're going to start after the October 1st numbers come in, looking at all of our data and sending out surveys to parents that we don't have information from and collecting, starting just to do just exactly that, Peter. Because I think the more data we have, we're a data-driven culture now, the better prepared we are to, you know, support what we need to support and, and make changes that we need to make.
And I know this is tricky and it goes back to the same caution that we had with what we were asking Principal Perone to do. But particularly with children that are in our system and then leave, where we have a relationship, and not everybody responds with survey and not everybody tells you in a survey what you really want to know and that we might explore ways of getting at that. And again, I come from a part of the educational industry, if you will, where we're really trying to figure out, you know, what's driving family decisions and who will they give the most candid response to? But ultimately, that candor is the most helpful in terms of, okay, this is something we want to address and we can, or we want, but not yet. Or, okay, we're never going to be able to produce that. And, and I think doing some investigation into how, and that's where it might be system-wide rather than putting it on the middle or, or high school or, or elementary school building administrators to, to secure it. But I know that, that, you know, that's an industry now. There are people out there who are good at getting families to be candid about, you know, this is, because I think sometimes when people leave, they want to, sometimes people leave when they're unhappy and we know. But generally, people are happy and, and what they'll want to tell us on the way out the door is all the things that they were happy about. Well, that doesn't help us, you know, in this new environment that we're in. We need to know what, what the difference makers are.
And I think I commend you on making people feel welcome, being part of the system, being part of anything, part of the community. That I think is vital. I think that's exactly what people are looking for to, to be, to feel that they are part of what's happening.
Right. And I think we've seen that a lot. You know, Laura talked a lot about the new PTO. And I think that we saw that, that sort of came out of some other, you know, really passionate moments in the community. And I think to be able to really capitalize that and use that energy to drive us forward, I think is really great. And so I, I agree that, you know, anytime that we can partner with, with people in the community, this is a, a great community to be a part of. And anytime we can, you know, really step out there and, and be a part of that is, is wonderful.
And then it touches back into the diversity where it's not just, you're not just geared at one certain student. It doesn't matter what student you are, you're geared at all of them. It's really important. Thank you.
To drive that point home, I mean, two different families approached me after the last of those playdates. One was from Maple, one was from Center Peppin, to tell me that they had been accepted as choice into a neighboring district and had decided as a result of that playdate to turn down the choice slots and to stay in East Hampton because it, it just turned on a dime for them.
That's great.
That was what they were lacking, was feeling like somebody cares, something reaches out.
And that, that, those playdates were, were wonderful. And I, I really enjoyed attending them. I enjoyed seeing them. They were at the same, the same time that my daughter's playdates were in Northampton. So I was only there for a small amount of time. But at the same time, it was great. And it was great to see parents talking to each other. It was great to see kids playing with each other. You know, it wasn't, it was all about that sense of community and that sense of belonging, that I can come to this playground and there's no pressure to, you know, answer anybody's questions or to, you know, put on a show. It's just to be there to play. And, and I thought it was, it was really great and I intend to continue those. And to find other ways to do the same type of thing, you know, where we can, you know, we've got some very formal kinds of meetings that we have that we offer. But then, you know, to find some ways where people can just come and, and be a part of that community. And I really enjoyed that part and, and hope to find other ways to, to do that, so.
And Amy, could you talk a little bit more about your key action five under community engagement? Your key action about inviting community members and families to school events, targeting preschool? Cause I know you and I have talked about that quite a bit and I think that's pretty interesting.
We have and we, you know, one of the ways that, when we were looking at sort of, you know, the incoming kindergartners and kind of the, the who we missed and who don't we know about? And, and why don't we know about these people? And, and how can we start at an earlier age welcoming people into this community? And, you know, we've got some really great preschool programs in this community. And how do we start talking to them before they're even a part of their school system? To get kids and parents excited about being a part of our schools. And so I think that a lot of what we want to do is start to make some of our, what used to be like our school events, more community-wide events, you know, sending flyers to those people who did choice out. They're still members of our community and, you know, bringing them back into this, this school culture and school community. So we, we've talked a lot about making partnerships with the, the preschools in town, not just our East Hampton preschool, but also the other, the private preschools in town. And really getting those families on board early on, getting those kids excited about being a part of our schools. And, and so again, building those relationships early on.
Great idea.
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions?
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we have Judy Avril, acting principal of Maple School, soon to be official principal.
Amy, Ms. Napolitano and I work very closely together and our, many of our improvement goals are aligned because our schools work together for these initiatives. And so like she's doing, we're taking time to raise the instructional core during faculty meetings now. And we just finished a PD faculty meeting on Monday, which was very successful, looking at MCAS data and really going deeper there. So just really raising the bar of what we're doing every moment and just taking advantage of every moment. And it's already, I feel, making a difference. So that's the instructional core, which is very much aligned with the Center Peppin school improvement goal. The data-driven decision-making, for me as a new principal, I'm really working on the culture in my building. So that data is a very intimidating, it's a very intimidating for teachers. And, you know, what I was saying to the teachers at the PD was, you know, we ask them to give their heart and their soul to their teaching every day. And then we ask them to look at their data very objectively and, and professionally. And it's, there's a disconnect there because it's very difficult. And yet, to be professional, we can't get into guilt or into blame. We have to really be looking at it objectively. And so I really challenged them to, to do that and they did a beautiful job. And so kind of just respecting both sides of that. So we're really working on the culture at Maple to, to be safe. And, you know, with our behavior program, we ask that children are respectful, responsible, and safe in our schools. And what I'm trying to do for the teachers is to help them feel that, you know, as, as the principal, I'm setting a tone so they feel like this is a community where they can be respected, where they're safe to talk about difficult things and where the responsibility is just pervasive. So that's been really positive and that's off to a nice start. And so we have some real data to look at. We have some real hard conversations to have and we need to do them honestly. And, and it's an amazing, amazing staff that's willing to do that. And then also with community engagement, I have very similar things to Ms. Napolitano as we look to bring families into the schools. We're doing a lot of school improvement. I was asked to look at Maple with a fresh eye and just start, start there. And it's been fun this summer. The custodial staff has been fantastic. They've really put up with me well as I've asked them to clean every corner and, and put up basketball hoops that, you know, have been in the basement for 10 years. It's like, okay, guys, let's go. And they've been wonderful. So that's been great. And we've just made some little improvements that I think have shown them that, you know, I think it's easy with an older building to say, well, where do you start? There's nowhere to start. And so we started in small places and I think it's made a difference and it's gotten people excited. The PTO has been amazing. The parents that I have, you know, volunteering to help, just coming up, wanting to be on school council, wanting to be involved with PTOs. The energy is wonderful, so that's been, has been very exciting. And also with the preschools, reaching out to the early childhood community. Last year, we did, we did some work with Kira Duratt, did some professional development for preschool teachers in other preschools and hoping, you know, really working with these kind of, with these kind of connections to keep the relationships moving in the right direction. So these are some of the things we're doing at Maple.
Questions for Ms. Belice?
I love your comments about fresh eyes. I'm glad that's working well for you.
It is, it is. It's, you know, it's, it's really fun to come in and look.
Yeah.
And I would highly recommend that you go over and have a look at the new Maple School. Judy really has done a great job of doing some beautification projects over there. And, you know, there's, there's a nice atmosphere. The garden is just absolutely beautiful outside Maple School. When I went over today to, to visit Judy, I, as I was walking up to the front door, there was a, a mother and her son, son, daughter, sitting on one of the benches of the picnic table. And she was reading a book to him. And I so wanted to just stop and take a picture, but I thought it would ruin the moment, so. And there were the, the plants behind them, the sunflowers and everything. It just, it was picture perfect, wonderful, wonderful. And I also just want to mention the first day of school when I was over there, there was a table set up with a PTO member there welcoming everyone and, and talking about the PTO and sharing the information about the PTO, very warm-
Quite a few names.
Welcoming feeling, yeah.
It was great.
Those girls don't mess around, and guys and gentlemen. They're, I mean, they hit the ground running and we're seeing that in a lot of groups, the school councils, we're seeing it, yeah, it's-
We have some really excited parents right now that are just happy to be part of everything and it's been wonderful. Yeah, it's been a real nice collaboration.
I know this is a, is an old theme for me, but continue to keep the data in its place. Nobody comes back to school five, 10, 20 years later and talks about the data. Or talk about their human experience.
Yeah.
And it's good to keep that perspective.
I think we are. I think that's what we all believe in. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you very much.
And I just want to say how proud I am of all of my administrators and the work that they're doing and the collaboration that they, they have among themselves, as well as the central office administrators, our assistant principals. It's just a wonderful feeling and, you know, they all are working so hard and doing so many good things. And I just want to say how proud I am of the team that we have here in East Hampton.
The camaraderie is unique, isn't it? Across the district like this, elementary teachers and middle school teachers and principals. And, I don't know, it's unique. You can feel the positive energy.
We plan to do a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
You guys have early data morons.
Oh, you don't want to stay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the, the next part of my report is the, the document on the preliminary September enrollment figures. And overall, our total enrollment is, I think, three less than it was last year. We have a, a nice increase at White Brook of 41 students over last year's members. year, we have a nice increase at Whitebrook of 41 students over last year's members of Whitebrook.
That's right.
We're down some in our elementary schools, and just down by five at the high school, but again, I just want to caution you that these are very preliminary numbers, these are just numbers that Sue Colby, my assistant, got from the building, secretaries, building administrative assistants, excuse me, on the first day of school, so those numbers are going to change, and we will update you with the enrollment numbers as we go, as we go on, I'm sorry.
For October 1st.
October 1st, yes, we'll have more official numbers then.
This one's going to drive you batty, but can we start to keep track of the data by class?
By class.
Start with the, right, so the, the class of 2015.
What class of 2016?
We know, you know, we know how big Brian's class is, but it'd be interesting to know how big Brian's class was when they were in seventh grade and when they were in fourth grade, and I'm wondering if we could start, because, you know, it's hard when you look at this, every year when you look at this data, it's a snapshot of right now, and you could look at the difference between the total number of students in grade four and grade five and say, oh, that's good news, but it may be that when the class that's in grade five now was in grade four, they were bigger or smaller than they are now, and that's really backed, if we're going to do data, and we know that data drives dollars and dollars provide resources, that if we tracked it, starting with a class of, so with someone who's starting now, what are they, if they start, if they finish, so they finish in 2015, so they, is it the class of 2027?
It's 27.
That's, that's starting kindergarten right now?
It's 27.
And how big is that class? You know, and maybe, I know, again, it's adding, and when you subtract that for the people literally move out of town, right, just looking at that number over time, it seems that would be a really useful number to track.
Yeah, we certainly could do that probably without too much trouble.
Going for it.
Put it on our list.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
The increase at Whitebrook, 41 students, you said, to what do you attribute that large increase, is that just the size of the, for the most part, the size of the grade four that moved to grade five?
It may be partially that, you know, as it's moving up, and I haven't had a chance really to dig into this carefully, but yeah, I'm sure it's partly a factor of that.
Just sounds so significant.
Yeah, there was a big fourth grade class, but, but overall, our enrollment numbers are staying stable, which is, is good.
Just to, I, I just want to express a concern that I'm sure everybody shares, but this kindergarten numbers are, we have classrooms of 25 and 26 in kindergarten, and I just feel like I would be remiss and I would feel really horrible if I walked away from this meeting and didn't put that on the table publicly, that that's...
There, I mean, clearly there's a lot of concern.
And thank you, I did mean to address that, so thank you, Wendy, I appreciate you drawing attention to that, so yes, we had unexpected enrollments come in over the summer, so our class sizes in the kindergarten increased to greater than we expected, they still are what's an acceptable average size for a kindergarten, according to state recommendations, and we do, I do want to emphasize that we have a paraprofessional in each kindergarten, so we have two adults for every kindergarten, as well as other support people who come and go during the day, and we will continue to provide every support that our kindergarten children need, I was there the first day when parents were visiting kindergartens, and there was just such a warm, happy feeling, I didn't have anyone coming up to me concerned about it, I haven't had any emails about it to date, if I, you know, if anybody has concerns, they should let me know, then I was there during the first week of school, and, you know, I'm happy to report that our kindergartens are warm, nurturing, thriving places, and the children looked happy, and the teachers are happy, they're pleased with the classrooms they have, and as far as I know, our parents are happy as well.
I think all of that, most likely, speaks volumes to the people we have in those kindergarten teacher positions.
Phenomenal.
And because that could, that could be, you know, one, two, three other people, and the dynamics would be very, very different, so I just hope that as a body, an elected body, we pay attention to these numbers when it comes time to talk budget, because we can't ignore, and not kind of leave, it's wonderful, and I have no doubts that everything you're saying is true, but I don't want to leave Wheatley and Russo and Gibbrey hanging out there like that, it's, it's a lot, that's a lot, and all that takes is one or two kiddos who, you know, a para is lovely, I just, I just want to make sure we don't ignore these numbers when we're talking about budgets and cuts, and, because this is, this is real everyday human experiences for not just our kids, but our teachers, who are phenomenal, and always going to make everyday great.
And I think those, you know, those are certainly considerations that we, we in our district this year are paying close attention to, but, you know, I will say that our teachers, you know, I'm not hearing from them that they're having a difficult time or that this is in any way something that is hard for them, I think they are enjoying what they're doing, they're enjoying their classrooms, and regardless of the class sizes, we will, as I say, continue to provide whatever supports they need, and we've made that really clear to them as well, so.
I actually think that you could also look at it as a really good way, I think what, that has been our goal, is to try to get students from day one, so getting that large of a kindergarten, I think it's really speaking volumes about our community and about our enrollment, and if you look at grade one, you know, where you have the 32 right in front of it, so I think it's, it's really speaking about what's happening and what they're outreaching, and I, you know, I think it's something that I know you're already on top of anyway, as are the teachers.
Well, I like to put the emphasis on the, the culture and the, as I say, the warm, nurturing environment, I believe our, all of our elementary schools have.
And the welcoming that they were talking about tonight.
That's right.
And the involvement, making people feel welcome, making them feel part of it is, I think, really key.
So the tricky part of these numbers for me is that part of it is due to unexpected things that came over the summer, because we end up with 125 in kindergarten, 108 in first grade, and we essentially have a swing teacher due to the budget necessities.
That's right.
Between there, where were, where were we going to go with five and where were we going to go with six?
That's right.
And, and because of the quality of the folks who are involved, I know that we would be equally well-served if it was six and five, and if it was grade one that we were talking about, but it highlights two points, one of which is budgetary, which is that the reason that we don't have six and six is economic, and the second piece is, this is one of those unintended consequences of being in the position of having to make decisions out of choice before you know for sure how many other folks are going to come through, and you don't want to be caught out at the other end, because then you have classes that while they may be smaller, you've lost valuable revenue, and so...
Valuable members of the community.
Right, and, but I think that the, that's why, you know, we could have sat back in the spring when we were making decisions about how many choice spaces to open, and say, well, who knows, there might be a boom in the summer, we don't want to do this, and teachers go home at the end of June expecting and planning, I'm going to teach X grade in the fall, and it's hard to call them up on August 8th and say, guess what, we're going to switch you, and these folks will do it, but I know it's professionally very hard, and those are two things that, that make this, because, you know, the cautionary note in the back of my mind is, next May, when we talk about, it looks like we're going to have the ability to take eight students in through school choice to the kindergarten, I don't think, well, shoot, should we do that, or should we wait for a, for a summer boom and not have the class sizes get to a level that are more challenging, because there's no question that 25 is somewhere between slightly and more than that challenging than 18 in a kindergarten class, even with folks like, you know, I see multiple folks here that my kids have had, and I know why they can do a good job with a class that's tricky students large.
Extraordinary teachers, extraordinary teachers, and I would say also that, you're right, Peter, the numbers we anticipated in the spring are not the numbers that we ended up with over the summer, and again, you have to make decisions about how many choice slots you open early in the year, and we ended up having fewer in first grade than we anticipated. Right now, we're collecting the data on exactly why that is, but the numbers in first grade went down, and the numbers in kindergarten went up, and that's where we are, but as I say, I just, I am confident, completely confident, that every single one of these children will have an excellent experience in our schools, and they're starting off that way, so.
Two quick things, because I have that feedback just because of my immersion in the elementary thing, so my son was in a 25 kindergarten class because he was in that birth year bubble that we probably all see, and he, he performed fantastically, it was a wonderful year for him in spite of all the challenges that he went into it with, that those teachers are phenomenal, I don't want to discount people's concerns, no, this is not our ideal situation, yes, we will work in the future to lower the class sizes as much as budget will allow, but that's not to say that these teachers aren't to the task this year, and I think that is what Amy and Judy were talking about with community engagement and reaching out to these pre-K, because somehow, we missed an entire population of folks who had some interest in attending, didn't have the, didn't know where to get the information, who to turn it in, and whatnot, so by building these bridges now, we're hoping to alleviate that bit by bit in the coming years, that's not something that we're ignoring.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Any other comments? And we'll then move on to minutes.
Motion to approve the school committee minutes from the regular session dated August 19th, 2014, second.
All those in favor?
Can we make an amendment? It should note my absence. Right, because now unanimous votes would be eight zero with Brian being here, right? So the votes are listed.
Brian doesn't count.
Okay, so then my question is, we list in the minutes votes as going through seven oh.
You weren't here, Peter?
Didn't I, I thought that was the one I missed, I knew I made one meeting.
It was last meeting.
And then I missed one, and I apologize for that, but...
Sue also wasn't here.
I wasn't here.
Right, so the notes...
His point is there would have only been six votes.
Right, so I should be listed as absent for August 19th, and the vote should be six zero.
So Laura, you need to just cross it off, and each vote should be listed as six zero to seven zero.
Gotcha. Do I need to write him in as absent, or is it just nothing, okay, so under present we say absent?
Yeah.
I was hearing spirit.
Motion to approve amended minutes from the school committee meeting regular session dated August 19th, 2014, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Lauren, I did try to channel you a number of times last meeting.
I think we mentioned you at least a dozen times.
Well, I'm really glad to see that all that good news came in about the, the conference that the high school hosted, that, that you got the nice notes from Rich Karen and Laurie Riss, that's great.
Okay, warrants and payroll.
Okay. Just one. A motion to approve the school payroll dated September 4th, 2014, in the amount of $456,665.33, second.
All those in favor?
I think we need to abstain, because it involves Peppin and my sister, we're abstaining.
Yes.
So I abstain.
Interesting.
Sure, yeah.
So to each, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Had to do that for a while.
Peter can tutor you on that.
Perfect.
A motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated September 4th, 2014, in the amount of $69,562.81, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
I think I can vote on that, right, because it's not payroll.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
And that is all that I have for warrants and payroll.
Okay. Next, we have an out-of-state field trip request for East Hampton High School, and that's a trip to Italy.
Motion to approve the East Hampton High School request for an out-of-state, or out-of-country field trip to Italy.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
They took great trips.
Okay, and now we have a, an added item to the agenda of a new position request.
Yes, I want to explain that to you this evening, we have a, we have contracted with an occupational therapist to provide services to our special education students in the past, and this, the particular person that we've contracted with is out on a maternity leave, and our special education director also has been out, you know, on a leave for a period of time, and for a variety of reasons, we have had some challenges with finding a new person to bring in for contracted services, I went over the budget, looking at the cost of our contracted services, and it really is approximately the same, if not perhaps a little more than it would cost us to hire a position, we are also not sure whether the person we contracted with is going to return after she has her baby, so we would like to have you approve this position of an occupational therapist, in the event that we would need to hire a full-time person as opposed to using contracted services, which we should know within the next week.
Any questions?
Is this person going to be, is it just OT, or do they do speech and language, or...
Just OT, and so it's a zero budget issue, there's, for the school department, there's no budgetary impact on this position.
Okay, I'm channeling the former mayor at the moment, and I'm thinking that if budget necessity required laying this person off, then there is a different budgetary impact than stopping a contracted service, is that right? I don't know the budget stuff well enough.
I thought you said it was a contracted service.
Contracted services, yes, so it's not the same, right, it's a contract, not a, not an employee.
Oh, oh, okay.
This position would be a contracted, what you're proposing is for an employee.
No.
Well, saying contracted means we just pull them in like a per diem kind of thing?
Yeah, we draw up a contract with them and pay them a certain, a set fee.
Right.
For their services.
They're not an employee.
Nope.
Right, but if we do this, we're creating an employee.
Correct, correct.
And so the budgetary wash, my concern about that would be that in the event that we faced a budgetary difficulty a year from now, which I hope we don't, isn't there a budgetary impact when you have a reduction in staff that's different than when you just cease a contract?
We would not, if we made a decision to hire somebody as a full-time employee, we would keep that person as a full-time employee, because what I've discovered is that it's costing us as much to have a contract employee as it would to have a full-time employee, so...
So really, it's more that, it's unlikely that the person would be, that the position would be eliminated, that's what, where our safety comes from, is that we're not likely to eliminate the position, not that eliminating it wouldn't cost us some money.
Your costs are in benefits and unemployment.
That's what I meant.
Because the city pays 100% of unemployment, of unemployment benefits.
Right, so it does have a budgetary impact.
We would predict that there would be no unemployment.
By not laying them off.
So that's the reason that it's a budgetary wash.
Could possibly be benefit impact to the city.
Right.
I just wanted to be sure that.
Yes.
Fistful watchdogs paying attention to us know that we're paying attention.
And those are great questions, and the difference in a contracted employee and a regular, a contracted, an outside contractor versus an employee is a benefited position, which is your health insurance and, you know, so on and so forth, all your benefits, and then the difference between ending somebody's contract, you basically just pay them as an invoice, versus as an employee, if they're terminated or laid off or whatever, then they're eligible for unemployment benefits, which the city pays 100% of, so those are good questions.
Are we ready to vote? Motion to approve the new position request for an occupational therapist.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Very good, thank you very much.